Call us mean to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you very much. You can be seated. Thank you, everyone, for coming today. As remember, just silence your cellphones. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I will move that.
Second.
Motion by Bittenger, second by Nelson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes five zero. Next is the consent agenda. Items two through six constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Number two is the approval of amendments of the September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five meeting. Number three is the approval of claims. Number four from Board Administration, Heather Satterright. A is approval of notice of property sale resolution for parcel ending in six zero one three, AKA eleven oh seven West Fifth Street for Tuesday, October fourth at four thirty-five PM. Item B is the approval of resolution for a tax suspension for initials MB. Item number five from Secondary Roads, Laura Severs, approval of permit to work in the county right away on Two Hundredth Street for Mark Richardson. And lastly, item six from Human Resources, Melissa Thomas, authorization to initiate hiring process. And with that, that's the end of the consent agenda, and I will move that.
Second.
All right. Motion by Bittenger, second by Nelson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes five zero. All right. Onto our agenda. It's a short one today. Item seven from Summit Carbon Solutions, Kaylee Gibson. It's an update on pipeline project, including discussion of community benefits agreement. All right. Come on up, Kaylee, introduce yourself and go ahead.
Good afternoon. Thank you, guys, for having me today. I've been here before. Previously, I was Kaylee Langrell. I'm now Kaylee Gibson, if you didn't recognize me. I have a couple things to pass out, if that's okay.
I'm going to receive.
I'll second. All right. Motion by Nelson, second by Dietrich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So my purpose for being here today is to give you guys a little bit of an update. I think you've been receiving some emails from us recently. One of those would be from our new CEO, Joe Griffin. He has about thirty-nine years of experience in the pipeline industry, mostly in natural gas. So with that comes a renewed interest and this community and landowner partnership program, which is in your handouts here. Looks like this. It has seven different commitments on it, and I'm going to go over those, and then I'll go through the rest of these handouts. So some of these are new, some of them are not. The first one is not new. That is the fifty thousand dollar plus one thousand dollar per mile emergency management grant. So that's for every county, and once we get closer to operations, that will be distributed. And so for this county, we do have about twenty, almost twenty-one miles. So that would be an additional twenty thousand dollars, almost twenty-one thousand dollars. Second is public awareness and open communication. You know, part of me coming here tonight, I've been here before, probably not as much as I should have been recently. We haven't had a whole lot to update until we did get our new management. But, you know, we want to make sure and come in and give you guys updates, and that continues through construction. And we also have a website. I don't know how many people actually get on that, but that is an important thing to note, because a lot of the information that I'm handing out tonight will also be on that website, as well as additional information. So where we get into the new stuff is the landowner commitment. So we will provide a statutory or seventy-two hour survey notice plus a five hundred dollar survey payment. We are now offering flexible easement options. We have three different options. So we have a lump sum, which is a little confusing, because it's not actually a lump sum. It's actually three payments. So one payment would be immediately. One payment would be when we get our permit. So now we are going through an amendment process with the IUC, and I'm assuming that would be after that amendment process is finished. Or when we get our phase two permit, that's when that, those funds would be distributed. And then, once we start construction. So three payments for that lump sum. Landowners can also opt for an annual payment, and they can split that up up to ten years. We could do more if, you know, if that's what they want. We just have to talk about that a little bit more. Or, the most confusing one, in my opinion, a payment option that is linked to all financial distributions to Summit's current owners. So this kind of makes them like an investor of the project or kind of like an owner, but without the negatives. So there's no liability attached to that. Just any time that Summit is successful, or the owners get a financial distribution, or the investors do, the landowner would also share in that benefit. And we added that because that had been requested by landowners in the past. Another thing that we're adding are the annual stakeholder payments over the life of the project. So for landowners, they would receive a baseline twenty-five cents per foot annually. That, that payment would be annually. Or if we get up to a hundred percent voluntary acquisition, they would get fifty cents per foot per year. And then, as always, you know, we've talked about it in this room plenty, I think, when I've been here. Eminent domain is a last resort, but even if that is used, those landowners do still get that payment. That payment is for all landowners across the board. So similar in our county commitment, we have, oh, and I'll say that acquisition for the, for the landowners, that's based on state acquisition. So that fifty cents would come from when we get a hundred percent voluntary, voluntary in the state. For counties, you get a baseline twelve and a half cents per foot per year. If we get up to a hundred percent voluntary acquisition in this county, you would get twenty-five cents per foot per year. So I know that's a lot to take in, and that's why I have the handout. So if you guys want to look back on that. And then our construction commitment, this really isn't new either. We want to prioritize union and local labor, labor as much as possible. Our contractors will be pre-qualified, and we will comply with the agricultural and environment, environmental mitigation plans. So you guys may know, in Iowa, we have the Agricultural Impact Mitigation Plan. That is, we kind of work hand in hand with the IUC, and then the IUC approves it. That has been done for phase one, so that has been done for this county. And that's where the county inspector comes in. So when we go into construction, you know, you guys would hire your county inspector. They would follow us through construction to make sure that we're following that document, and if we are not, they have full stop work authority. And that is paid for by us. Number six, tribal engagement. We do have a lot of outreach with tribes. I don't know how much that comes into play for you guys, but that's something we wanted to note. And then water stewardship and transparency. Water has been a big thing the past few years, a thing that a lot of people have questions about. We are looking into multiple different ways to, for our cooling towers, aside from water. So we want to be as efficient in that process as possible. And we're also going to recycle and reuse that water where possible, because it is just used in the cooling towers. There's no CO2 mixture with water or anything like that. It's just used to cool the process. So I'll move on to this handout here that is our open house invites. So we are, since we have new management, we're holding a couple more open houses. Not in every county, but at least close to every county. I think the closest one to you guys would be November eleventh in Cherokee. And that's just an option or an opportunity for people to come in, ask questions, get to know our new management, things like that. So I'll move on to the map. You guys have seen this many times. But there is a difference. We are upsizing this pipe to twenty-four inches. That is in our IUC amendment, and that is to give us more options. So, you know, everyone knows what's happened in South Dakota with the eminent domain bill. This gives us another option. We're still looking at options to go through South Dakota, but we're also looking at options to go west into Nebraska. So that's where that comes from. One thing to note about that, we will have to renegotiate those easements. So that's important to know. Moving on from that, we have the economic impact sheet. This one has been updated this month. So these are the tax estimates for this county based on the pipe size, the length of, and the length of pipe. And there's no capture facility in this county, so that wouldn't be taken into account here. But that's kind of broken down. I guess what you guys would be most interested in is that bottom one, the one million dollar number that's the county general fund. So I think that that's all I have for just my presentation. If you guys have any questions for me.
On the emergency response and preparedness, it's a thousand dollars per mile. Is that per year?
There will be a continuation of the grant. It may not look the exact same. You may have to apply for it, but there will be a continuation of that, yes.
So it's, it's not that departments in the county would get that every year. They would have to apply for it every year?
The first year, they would get it automatically, and then it's poss, I don't know what that's going to look like in the future. They may not have to apply. They may just get a check in the mail. That's pretty standard across pipeline projects. I know in Buena Vista County, I talked to the emergency manager there, and she says every now and then she just gets a check from Dakota Access. So.
What, so you've got three townships that we're going through. When I look at these fire districts, you probably have, looks like Lawton, Bronson, Sergeant Bluff, and probably Salix for sure. So you've got four fire departments that would be involved. So would they get any money, or is this just, they would just have to apply for a grant?
So my, they will get all equipment paid for, all the trainings that they attend. We would pay for their time to come to that, because this is in addition to those things, this grant.
You mean, equipment for dealing with a rupture?
Yes.
So what, what's the cap, or what, how many dollars are we talking for equipment that they would roughly need?
Well, it wouldn't be, we have, so this is all in, we have to speak with the emergency manager, and that's part of our new, we have a new management. So Rod Dillon, who was previously with us, working with the emergency managers, is no longer here. We have a new person, Jeremy, and he's, he's already started the process, reaching out to emergency managers, and it just, it's going to take coordination. There's really no limit of dollar amount. It's what do they need, and what do they already have, and what do we need to purchase for them? And then, as far as how the grant itself is distributed, I believe that's going to be up to the emergency manager. So we provide the funds and kind of step back and let the emergency manager distribute those.
So if, like, these four departments needed a hundred thousand dollars each of equipment, you guys would pay for that?
Mm-hmm.
Roughly.
Yeah, I'm not saying we would just hand over a hundred thousand dollars. We'd probably purchase the equipment and give it to them.
Sure, sure. But twenty-one miles through the county, is that, I heard you correct on that?
Yes.
Of a twenty-four inch line?
Twenty point eight miles, yeah.
Twenty point eight, okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Could you talk about, you have, it says compliance with agriculture and environmental mitigation plans. Could you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah. So I'm not too involved on the environmental side. I am very involved with the Agricultural Impact Mitigation Plan that I mentioned earlier. It's a very large document. I can email it to you guys if you want to take a look at it. It is in our IUC docket as well. And it's basically just a guideline of how to restore the soil on people's ground. And so when you hire that county inspector, you know, a lot, I won't tell you who to hire, but a lot of people have hired, like, ISG Snyder. They have a lot of experience. They go out and they watch us and make sure that we're doing those things.
But then they're paying for that upfront.
Summit Carbon Solutions will pay for that. That's required by the state. So they, the way it works is they will invoice the county, and we will, you pass that invoice to us, and we pay. Because tech, they are not allowed, just for, I guess, a no bias purpose, they're not allowed to work directly for us. They are supposed to work directly for the county. And that's why I'm not going to tell you who to hire. We don't pay them directly. It comes through you guys and all that.
On the environmental side, I, what, what I get frustrated with, and this happens with, whether it's pipeline projects or with, like, solar or wind, that I don't like, is that, what ended up happening is that there's kind of a formula for how wildlife or land is impacted. And then, whether it's the EPA or whatever, they basically will make you or other developers go out and buy farmland, and then turn it into the environment that they just destroyed. And I think a lot of people don't understand that this actually happens. And so, in a way, farmers such as myself, we're competing for land against companies that have destroyed land somewhere else, but now are buying land away from us that we could use to farm, to turn it into wildlife habitat. So I think that's just, for people in this room, if you didn't know that that happens, that happens all across Iowa and all across this country. I think it's funny that we could somehow think that if we destroy an environment over here, we can just recreate it over here, and everything's fine. But maybe I'm the only one that thinks that. I think that's all the questions I have for now.
I got a question about, when you have one of these pipelines rupture, you know, how do you treat the people in that area? What is the first sign of sickness when this ruptures?
Well, are you talking about how we would respond in that emergency, or what the symptoms of CO2?
Well, how about symptoms first and then response, though?
So CO2 indoors is very dangerous. Outdoors, it disperses quickly. The dangers of it, with this pipeline specifically, are going to be the pressure. So if you are out there digging on your backhoe, you hit it once, twice, three times, it busts, your immediate danger is going to be the debris flying up. And there is one OSHA recordable when it comes to a CO2 pipeline, where a contractor was digging and actually pulled the line up towards his face in an open cab, and the CO2 sprang directly at him. He got out of the cab with frostbite on his fingers. So it's, it's, it is an asphyxiant, but when you're outdoors, it disperses very quickly, like I said. But when it hits atmosphere, it becomes very cold and creates almost like a dry ice type of thing. So that's why he got the frostbite. So I guess I would say debris, the cold, and the asphyxiant aspect.
And then, what's the impact on soil and crop yields, do you know, in, in our area?
So that's going to be widely debated. I'm sure a lot of people in this room have different opinions. I know when Dakota, all we can do is look at when other pipelines went through, and what the yields were after that. A lot of people still have crop loss, I don't know if they still do, but they did have crop loss for a while after Dakota Access. One of the things that pipeline companies do, including us, we are paying three years of crop damage. After that three years is over, all a farmer has to do is show us their yield loss, and we will compensate that. I will say, when Dakota Access constructed, a lot of landowners had issues with them working in wet conditions. At that time, the county inspectors, like I was talking about earlier, did not have stop work authority. So because of that, and because of the crop yields, or the crop losses that people suffered afterwards, the state took the time to make changes to the Agricultural Impact Mitigation Plan, which includes that stop work authority. So we're hoping that it will be, you know, it's a continuously improving process.
How many miles of easements do you have recorded in Woodbury County out of the twenty point eight?
I just texted, okay, I cannot give you exact miles. I can tell you, we have sixty-eight percent of the miles. So you can do the math on that. But it is important to note, we have to renegotiate all of those because of the pipe size change, so technically, we're at zero. But before the pipe size change, we had sixty-eight percent.
That'd be thirteen miles, thirteen point six.
Thank you, Dan. On the environmental mitigation, going back to that, is that, a lot of these groups will hire a third party to do this work. I've seen them work in Woodbury County. I see the bird watchers come out, and they sleep in their car. They watch movies, and then they say that the environment's fine. Are, I'm, I'm serious. Is that something that the IUC dictates who's going to do the environmental mitigation studies? Is that someone that you choose? Is it somebody that we get to choose?
So as, as far as the county inspector, you choose that person. But I don't know if that's addressing your concern, because I'm not talking specifically about wetlands or anything like that. That's a completely different issue. I'm talking specifically about farmer ground. So like, say we crossed your, your farm ground. That is what that county inspector is going to be looking at. And they, I just don't know how involved the AIMP is in actual environmental, because that is more of a federal issue.
Yeah. Okay.
But I can, I can definitely ask. We have a whole team for environmental, and I can figure that out.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Okay.
All right. Any other board questions?
Okay. Now, we'll ask some public input. If anybody wants to come speak to this, you have three minutes. Thank you, Kaylee. Yeah.
Yep, and I did put my business card in there. I don't know if I mentioned that, but you guys feel free to reach out to me anytime.
All right. Thank you for that update. Yeah. If anybody from the public wants to speak, you're more than welcome. Three minutes. Please make sure you keep all comments addressed to the issue at hand. Remember, this was just an informational item only. So.
Deb Maine, ten twenty-six Charles Avenue. Summit is now on their third CEO, and with that comes a new permit disguised as amendment. Well, let's define an amendment. Amendment is a minor change or addition designed to improve. Well, what's in the new amendment? Modifying the root and pipe size, modifying rail and highway crossings, adding an ethanol plant, removing conditions set forth by the IUC's final order, including one condition, protecting Woodbury County from the construction of the pipeline. Summit cannot meet the conditions in the phase one project, so reengineer the entire proposal. The CO2 is now being moved west rather than north. The final destination is unknown, but I kind of heard today that it might be the DJ Basin at the corner of Wyoming and Colorado, and the border of Kansas and Nebraska, possibly. So what does that mean for Woodbury County? The pipe size has doubled to twenty-four inches, the same pipe size that ruptured in Sotarsia, Mississippi. We'll be hosting eight times the volume of CO2 as before. The risk to our residents has increased exponentially. But hey, we're being offered incentives. Twelve and a half cents per foot for, I figured, thirty miles, offers us not quite twenty thousand dollars. Twenty thousand dollars compared to a multi-billion dollar taxpayer collection of dollars for Summit. And there's more. If the county or landowners pit these easements against those not signing, we're thrown a few more cents per foot of pipeline. Well, that incentive should create some neighborly relationships. The rest of the benefits are already on the table. They have been for a long time. This amendment will be heard by a judge on October tenth in Polk County District Court. The hearing was originally slated for oral arguments on the appeal of phase one permit. If the judge remands the amendment back to the IUC, the commission will have to schedule evidentiary hearings to consider the motion to amend. If the judge rules against the remand, a new date for the phase one appeal will be set. Yesterday, they filed a motion to consolidate all sixteen separate dockets. Last year, they objected to consolidation, and the litigation goes on and on. Entering its fifth year, I'm tired of Summit's constantly changing business plan, moving goalposts, consuming our time, and wasting resources.
Thank you. Anyone else before we move on?
Steve Pori, seventeen fifty-seven, two hundred and ninetyth Street, Salix. Deb took some of my stuff, but the bottom line here is, you know, we've addressed wind energy, haven't we, in this county? We've addressed a solar farm that was proposed across our agricultural land. Both of those, we put them on the sideline where they belong. And here we are now with a company that wants to trample all over our constitutional rights, which is the Fifth Amendment, okay? Using taxpayer dollars to do this. A pipeline that right now has no confirmed destination. It wants to take one of the two gases of life out of our atmosphere called CO2. For what? To sequester it underground somewhere? Come on, you guys. It's, this is a common sense question here. This is a huge profit boondoggle. We've talked about this at length, and I know we're going to continue to go on talking about this. But it's, it's really about protecting landowner rights. If we allow this one exception, what's going to stop the others from coming and doing the same thing using eminent domain? This is a common sense. This is, this is America. This is what we're all about. This is about our own self-preservation of our property rights. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Anyone else? No, we're going to move on. Okay.
Gail Pomquist from Lawton, Iowa. We're talking about giving the emergency rescue squads all the money they need, or all the equipment they need. What good is that going to do me? I'm approximately eight miles away from the nearest rescue squad. By the time they get there, if there's a break on my farm, I would be dead. My tenant would be dead if he was out working the land. Okay, that is no help to us when we live so far. There's no warning system. Why don't we have a warning system? So I was in Elkhorn, Nebraska, when the tornadoes hit last year. You could hear sirens going off every place, but we have nothing like that from Summit. It's going to devalue the land that we have farmed for years and years. Who wants a farm that has carried by floods? If I want to sell, I'm going to have to take a reduced value. Right. Shouldn't have to do that. What about insurance? Has anybody come up with an insurance company that will insure us against loss? No. All of our insurance companies have turned us down. We don't have any guarantee of having a backup to pay for the damage. I could be sued for everybody, from everybody, for three or four miles around me. That would basically make me a pauper. So there are a lot more things to be thought of than just what was presented today.
Thank you, yeah. Thank you.
I do have a question, since.
Sure.
Now, it's escaping me. Oh, could you confirm where the destination is? Is this going to go loop around into North Dakota? Are we talking about that corner down there, Nebraska, Kansas?
So that is to be determined at this time. But we are still looking at options through South Dakota, but we are also looking at options to go west, like she said, to the DJ Basin in Wyoming. So that's something that we're still working through. And I, I understand there's a lot of unknowns. That's just how these things go, and we have to kind of keep our options open. But once we have that decision, we will let you know. But those are the two places we're looking right now.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item number eight. Board Administration, Ryan Erickson. Item A is approval of the participation form for the National Oakwood Combined Settlement. Ryan?
This is similar to last week with the Purdue settlement. A new one came in that I was made aware of, a little too late to get it signed last week, but it is now, there's eight additional manufacturers that this combined settlement will, you know, participate in the combined lawsuit.
I'd move approval.
I'll second. All right. Motion by Nelson, second by Dietrich. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes five zero. Item B is approval of the annual urban renewal report for fiscal year twenty-five. Ryan?
Yeah, this is a requirement of the, you know, state of Iowa that we have to file based off of our.
of our urban renewal, our TIF areas. And right now, there are two on this report, which is the Grow Woodbury area and the Platinum Grain. Platinum Grain is actually completed and so there's zero activity in that area, but it's still on this report. The Grow Woodbury is, the TIF revenue is used to, uh, you know, secondary roads will pay $300,000 on the gravel road project and the rest of it is funded by this TIF area.
Okay. Questions by the board for Ryan? All right. I'll move to approve.
No, second.
All right. Motion by Bittenger, second by Carper. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes five zero. All right. On to number nine, reports on committee meetings.
All right. I had three last Thursday at the Simcoe Certs Building, so I'll try to move through them pretty quick. But Sulan Regional Transportation Planning Association Policy Board, uh, they're working on a grant for the US DOT Maritime Grant for the Mon, for Monona County. Uh, they said that could take like 10 years for them, but, uh, and then they're also working on creating maps of tourism attractions and amenities near the Little Sioux Inca Paduta River Water Trail for the DNR. So that's a good thing because I think that trail goes through Woodbury County and stuff like that. Second one was the Sulan Regional Transit System Board. Uh, Director Ryan, Brian Pearson gave updates on that. Uh, the facilities are putting in for a $9.6 million low or no emission grant for the Lamarrs facility. Um, there was nothing on the transit really that pertained and training events, outreach administration. They had, uh, they were, you know, doing parades, podcasts, radio, TV, and community fairs, getting the word out there on the, uh, regional transit system that they have. So they're trying to , uh, work that out into other communities. I think they're going to have some stuff out in Idagrove and also Mowville coming up as well. So, uh, the Western Iowa Community Improvement Regional Housing Trust Fund Board, Jenny Anderson gave updates on that. Um, there's 13 current project applicants on the Woodbury side. Um, and there's the, on the waiting list and then there's three applications in process for Woodbury County on that. So that's all I had.
All right. Thank you. Supervisor Dietrich? Anybody else? All right. Moving on. Number 10, citizen concerns. Feel free to come to the mic and address anything that was not on the agenda or elected officials. Come on down.
Good evening. Tina Virgin, Woodbury County Treasurer. Um, first thing I want to talk about, and this is more me probably giving some accolades to my office. Uh, we did finish up. Today was the last day of property tax collections. Um, and I just wanted to share just a few of the statistics on it. So for the month of September, we saw it was 6,200 people in the office. Uh, we hit an all-time record on Monday with 464 customers coming in the office. That's just the lobby. And understand that sometimes they come in with more than one person. Um, that doesn't include the window. The window, uh, the drive-up window, we had 2,300 people this month. Um, over the last three days, it was 477 came through our drive-up window. Uh, we have expanded services at that drive-up window. Just, we, we were just focused on, uh, registration renewals. Now, we've expanded some of that, um, in our, in the payments that we take, including, um, credit card payments. So it's actually helped some of our elderly and some of our handicapped people to be able to not have to get out of their car and they come to a drive-up window. Um, and then Anthem, uh, they've seen, let's see, about 1,400 people on Anthem this month. Um, over the last three days, it was 434. It looks like we had about 180 people in the office today. So that's quite a lot of work for our office. Um, you know, that's, it works out to be about seven people per hour, um, that they see, that they touch, that they talk to. Not, well, I should, that they talk to, but that doesn't include our phone calls, doesn't include the drop, the drop-off work or anything like that. So I just wanted, yeah, everybody to know, not just the, um, board, but to let my office know that, you know, we do appreciate everything that they do. Um, you know, we have a lot of customers that come in and they can get a little frustrated when it gets busy in the office, but yes, they did a great job, um, handling all the customers. We were still able to pretty much close the office at about 4:30 every day.
Wow.
So I just wanted to share that. Um, and I think that's it. I, we do have somebody here that I talked to regarding, this is another issue and this is going to be drainage. I know that, uh, auditor SGAF had, um, had sent out an email the other day regarding some drainage questions in terms of, um, what is actually included in all of it. Um, and I think some of it comes down to, for our drainage, and it is a question that we can look at at another point in time and discuss, is how we actually send our drainage, um, statements out. We include them in our property tax statements. And those drainage bills are due September. Um, they aren't divided into two payments like the tax payments are, so, um, it can be a, a large sum of money for some people. Um, this year, we got tax statements out. Um, August 15th is when they started hitting, uh, mailboxes. So that goes in about 45 days. Um, we may want to consider going back to actually issuing the drainage statements when we receive them from the, from the Recorder's Office, uh, which is either late June or early July. Um, but just to let you know that, you know, there's about 4,000 statements that need to be, would need to be issued and there would be a cost anywhere from what, $3,500 to about $4,000, depending on how much it would cost us to get it to, either get a vendor or we do it in-house. Um, I mean, postage is postage.
Yep.
And envelopes are envelopes. And then it's about how much it's going to actually cost us to print the paper. So I just wanted to share a little bit of that, um, as you actually hear from Ms. McCall. Yep. I'm, I'm trying to set it up. Boy.
So while he's coming up to the mic, just as a history of why those drainage statements are combined with the tax statement, because that happened after we converted to our new software in 2019, and the, the previous treasurer decided that it would be good to have those together because there were a lot of drainage payments or tax statements that weren't paid because people will get multiple statements and then they would pay one of them thinking they paid everything. So that's kind of the reasoning behind that. We can have these conversations as we develop things moving forward, but I just wanted you to be aware that that was the reasoning back then.
And we have just, we, we also have kind of looked at how we do that on our tax statements. We highlight them. We put them down. So we try to make it very clear for customers as to what is their tax and what is their drainage. Um, but there's always pros and cons going back and forth.
Okay. First off, uh, I said they, they just will have a gun and have a blank check for my drainage tax because I don't know about it ahead of time. I never have any, uh, input on it whatsoever. Uh, I got to mortgage my farm more to pay these taxes. I, yesterday I got the bill, total bill for $66,000. Half of it is drainage. Just the drainage. I don't know. And the lady back there said that you guys had something to do with setting that drainage tax and I don't know if you do or not or, but anyway, uh, I'm getting this drainage through my farm. Most of it is no benefit to me. And, uh, it's, uh, it's just, it's just boggling. How come they can, how come, uh, you want me to finance this ditch, my, maybe for miles, and I'm just trying to fix a little bit of the east bank on my farm? Who is the ditch committee? Mr. Mark was. Are you still? Do you have a ditch committee? No, Mark? Well, that's good. Well, uh, I'll tell you, another thing is that, uh, this takes, uh, I don't know, we're having what you call a little bit, little prices on things. So it's, uh, four loads of soybeans and about nine loads of corn just to pay the drainage. She tells me if I don't pay it today, it's $500 more tomorrow. And so I'm, I've just hung out to dry. That's all it amounts to. And I'm just a, just a farmer. Just, that's it. I wish you'd have something to say about it or do something. Uh, I've got $200,000 in the river. Just will throw it in the river, as far as I'm concerned. What in the hell is it going or what's going on? Uh, I, I've got a chunk of land that's about a little over a mile along the east bank of the river, but I'm getting some terrific bills off of that. Like I said, just increasing the mortgage on my farm to pay this. So thanks a bunch. I'd like to talk to Tina when we get done here.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Would you like me to describe the process of, of how this assessment occurred?
Sure.
Okay.
That's fine. Yeah.
So, um, you probably recall in October, um, when Mr. Nero was here in the engineer's office and a contract was approved by the board with ISG. Now, that contract, my understanding is, was to, uh, to determine what the cost of the entire project would be to, to fix the levees in the area. And at that time, I know there's a few different board members here, but it was approved to have a contract with ISG and that contract includes conducting a survey, preparing, uh, and preparing the work, um, plans and specifications, design development, um, and so forth. And that was in the amount of $70,800. And then the discussion included amounts up to 200, 250,000 is what they anticipated that the entire project would come to. The thought is that once ISG is finished with this contract that has been approved, then we would have a number. And I know you had mentioned assessing things over a five-year period for the drainage, but since we don't know the amount of the entire project yet, we can't assess that over a five-year period because we don't know what that amount is. So the thought process going into the assessment for the drainage this year, we worked with Laura, Tina, Diane in the Recorder's Office, myself and my deputy to, to determine who will prepare the assessments to bring to the board. In the past, it was county engineer for the ditch that, that you're residing in. And I know your ditch only has about five or six people that pay the taxes for that entire area. Um, so, uh, Laura turned that assessment over to us for this year while we figure out who's going to perform the assessments. So what we did is we looked at the outstanding, uh, what we call is warrants. How much money do we owe? Because in the drainage ditch you live in, which is Bennett McDonald, uh, we, uh, at the time in June is when we looked at the assessments, there was $17,000 outstanding owed. So we didn't have enough money to pay. So we were in the hole basically $17,000 at the, while the board was determining what to assess. So then we called ISG and we said, how, how many, what's the amount of, uh, uh, invoices that you believe that you'll be charging us for fiscal year '26? They gave us the number out of the 70,000 on this contract that they would probably have about $35,000 of work during the year. So we proposed to the board that we assess, uh, I think it was 55, $52,000 that would cover the $35,000 for the ISG work plus the 17,000 that was already owed. And so I just wanted to give you the background of how the number came up. And then they look at that, and I think this has been described before, but it, it's new to a lot of people. So where the drainage is, they look at the benefit of the land. So different landowners may pay a different amount based on the amount of benefit that you get from the ditch that is on your property. So you may pay a, a different percent than a neighbor. It all depends on what that percent factor is. So then that $52,000 gets split across those parcels in there. So I just wanted to explain to you how we came up with the assessment amount of $52,000 for Bennett McDonald, uh, what the reasoning behind that was. And then there's also money that will be coming probably after the bills that we've paid 20,000 or so that will be owing to ISG for fiscal year, the next fiscal year '27, which will be next year's tax statement. And at that time, hopefully, we'll be able to know a grand number. And then the board can decide if they want that assessment to be split across five years for payment back.
Can the county ever, you know, donate any money to this business? Uh, I mean, there's never any funds for, where in the hell's my $30,000 taxes go? Where'd it go? Uh, here's another 29 right here.
So Dennis, if you remember, a year ago, you came and asked for us to fix the ditch.
Yeah.
And I believe the, the actual number was $2 million that would be spread on the seven of you in Bennett McDonald. And we actually tabled that because we said, there's no way that you folks could afford that.
No.
And then you continued to come back and ask that we spend money. So we had authorized to spend 50,000 and we talked about a year ago that because you are the largest landowner in that district, that you would carry the biggest burden of that. The reason that taxpayer dollars don't go to that is you seven pay for the benefit because you seven are the only ones who benefit. It's the same as every district in Woodbury County. No other drainage district gets other taxpayer money. They pay for their own benefit. So I'm a little, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, but we've, you know, you were here for several meetings a year ago and we, we discussed this very, very.
Well, if we're never, if, uh, if they ever get that $2 million worth, I'd just, if we had anything to say about it, a seven, a seven would probably say no. Why would you, why would you put another $2 million on it? If they'd let me fix my little ditches on the east bank, I think I can do it for maybe $5,000, $10,000. You're spending all this money for somebody to figure out what the hell. Uh, but, uh, they, I can't even get, uh, can't even fix my, those little dips in my bank, about 100 feet, I figure. Uh, I've tried to get, I supposed to get a permit through the Corps of Engineers and I've called 20 times at least. Today, I got a call back from the first person in the Corps of Engineers I've talked to this summer. Number one. The rest of them just got a machine. That's all I got. And they'd referred it to a different number. But anyways, that's a mighty strange business for me, but I guess I'm going to quit. Let's just, just come here to complain because she said I got to pay today or go, go into debt some more. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Anybody else?
Chairman, I had another.
Sure.
I just wanted to keep the board up to date on, we had the actuary review of the self-insured health plan and it came up as, uh, for the plan ending June 30th, 2025, the reserves necessary for incurred but not yet paid are $816,700. What we had in fund balance at the end of June was $691,846. So we were approximately $125,000 short. And his comment is, "In my opinion, you should increase the funding level and, or make a transfer of funds to eliminate the actuarial deficit to remain in compliance with Iowa law." And so that, I'll be bringing a motion next week to move that $125,000, but this was due by June 30th. I've discussed it with our auditor. So we've kind of, we've already made the transfer. I'm just going to have the official approval next week.
Yeah.
And the auditor was okay and was said there'll be no findings for that.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ryan, for that update. Okay. All right. All right. Going on, moving on to citizen cons, I mean, board concerns, excuse me. Any board concerns?
This might be a question for Josh, but, um, citizen concerns? Come on down.
Yeah, they're back there very well. This is a citizen concern.
Okay. William Burrows. Um, you folks might recall, a few weeks ago, I sent you some, an email, uh, complaining about you funding the board, uh, the Sulan Chamber Annual Dinner for two tables, uh, $2,400. And at that time, I said, uh, that's in violation of your own policy not to support nonprofits unless there was matching funds. Well, he must have gone ahead and done it anyway. And then I saw, I see there was a special, um, notice put out about you'd all be attending that meeting. Um, so I got a frog in my throat and a burr under my saddle. Um, I've been, uh, contacting, uh, Chair. Um, I've been, uh, contacting Chairman Bittner for probably two or three weeks now, asking for the names of those twenty people that, that went to the dinner. And he's been stalling, stonewalling me. Uh, I got an email from him today that said, "If I wanna pursue this further, I'm gonna have to hire an attorney." What is that all about? To get twenty names? Apparently, you guys don't read nine ninety. The salary information about nonprofits. There is no way that this organization needs that money. The president makes more than all of you put together, and you might even throw Joshua's salary in there. You still wouldn't get there. So, I was asking for two things. Number one, who got to go? And number two, what was the process for selecting them? Every, maybe not every week, but often, you recognize employees for their, their dedicated service here. And I would think that that would be something you could recognize their service for. Um, I'm not telling you how you run your business, but I am a taxpayer. It's small potatoes compared to these guys. But, it, I'm, you know, it's important. It's important to me, 'cause it's a principle of thing. Now, Matthew, I'm not picking on you, but about a year ago, uh, there was a vote taken, um, to elect, uh, Daniel Bittner as the chair. And I'm not gonna try to paraphrase what you said, but at the time, I didn't disagree with you. In retrospect, based on his behavior the last month, I think I'd have to agree with you. I watch YouTube too, so I could go back and see what you said, but, um, I'm not gonna try to say it here. So, what's a guy gotta do to get twenty names and the process for selecting them? Maybe it's none of my business. Chairman Bittner says today that it's gaming funds. Well, guess what, guys? You, you use gaming funds, maybe not every meeting, but a lot of meetings, and you always have to get an explanation of why you're using those gaming funds. I don't see this as being any different. The fact that you've always done it, that doesn't make any sense. To me, it doesn't. Maybe to other people. So, anyway, I'd like to know the names, um, and I'd like to know the process that was used to select those people. Um, I'm assume you all got, got to go, your spouses got to go. That's great. That's fine. That's one table. There's another table. Elected officials should've got to go, you know? I don't have a problem with that. But, I don't know what the secret is, why it's a big secret. So, that's my two cents. I appreciate it, your time. Thank you.
Alright. Board concerns?
I have two. Uh, Mr. Burrows, I don't know what the process was, and I was not able to go, so I can't answer either one of your questions, so I'm sorry. Uh, my second one is for Joshua. On these drainage districts, how can we give these up? I mean, we're addressed with this problem, and I, I understand it's a lot of money, but we went through this publicly. We talked about the amounts. I had someone else from this district also call and complain about the fees. When the fees were discussed here, we tabled it, because we were, us five, I guess two of you weren't here, but the five at the time, were afraid that it was too much money. And we were told, "Nope, nope, we wanna do this, we wanna do this, we wanna do this," and now it's too much money. Is there a process to let the local people run this and get the government smaller? 'Cause I'm just tired of these drainage districts. They're just, they're nothing but drama.
So, yes, there is a process for landowners within the district to petition, to, uh, essentially have their own board, run their own district. There's a threshold that has to be met as far as how many of the landowners, what percentage of the land, um, would join in that petition. But, then that process is set out in code, so the short answer is, yes, there's a way.
But, it would have to initiate from them. We couldn't...
Come from them, yeah, the board. You can't, uh, on your own, say, "Here, take this from us." Uh, especially, they have to be willing, and they have to, um, run it as a public entity, you know, with meetings and, uh, everything that comes along with that. Um, but, yes, there is a process where the landowners can take control themselves.
Michelle, you have the list of the trustees for that district? Or a name? Or the names for...
For what?
The Bennett McDonald District.
So, the Board of Supervisors would be the trustee for that?
Or, I mean, who the landowners were that got the assessments?
Oh, yes, I do.
I'll get that from him. I'll, I'll contact him and see if there's any that would like to run their own district. Dennis, would you like to run your own district?
Yes.
Great. Alright.
I always go back to, we had a meeting, town hall meeting, several years ago, probably more than sixty people. And they all wanted to form their own drainage district, but none of them wanted to be the trustees. So, it didn't happen.
That makes, that makes sense.
And we just went through it with Salix as well.
Right, right, right. Okay. Any other board concerns or issues? Okay, alright. Do I address city concerns, citizens' concerns or not? Um, let me say this. There is no hiding. Uh, I'll, I'll, I'll answer this right now. So, uh, all elected officials and department heads were asked to go. First come, first served basis. Nothing hiding there. If they brought a spouse, they paid a hundred and twenty dollars, and so, some of our supervisors came, paid for their spouse, so, um, so they did that. As I said, we're following Iowa code. Nothing criminal, si- civil, or ethically wrong, and, um, you're allowed, people are always allowed to ask questions, and as, as the federal courts have ruled, citizens have a right to critique elected officials at a higher degree than free speech, and actually say harsher things, and that's okay, and we can take that. But, uh, just so the public knows, there's nothing unethically wrong, nothing against Iowa code for what we use gaming funds for, per attorney counsel. So, Bill, I appreciate you being here. Like I said in my email, I always appreciate you saying stuff, and, you know, and asking good questions, but, um, but, um... As I've always said, I don't deal with needless drama, and there's nothing hiding, so, thanks for being here, but, um, but... We'll talk afterwards. Right now, we're not gonna address anything, so we'll talk afterwards with that, because...
May I respond to what you said?
Um, no, no. We're, we'll talk afterwards.
No, no worries.
Yeah. Uh, sir, that's a lie, because I'll be right here, ready to talk, so, uh, if you walk out, that's on you. But, once again, we're not, this is not, we're not causing drama, so...
About the accusation you made, can you regale?
Okay, alright. We're adjourned.